Okay, so we're going to move on to Committee of the Whole. We have six items in front of us today. Five of them will be held in council chambers. And the fifth one, the Budget Work Session, will be held in the Mayor's Boardroom. Our first item in front of us is a resolution setting the 2017 council chamber meeting schedule. I hope everyone's had a chance to take a look at this. Something that's significant is a little bit different than what we've done before, is we have scheduled the reorganization meeting on a Wednesday, on January 4th. And the reason for this is if we waited until the 9th to do our reorg meeting, our first city council meeting would be January 23rd. That would be the first opportunity for us to do business. So that would make almost six weeks from the time December 12th, last meeting of the year. So we moved it to January 4th. That's traditionally a very short meeting. So this is how we're accommodating the calendar with the holiday section. Is there anybody who has any concerns or thoughts? I have gone through this calendar pretty thoroughly. If anyone has any suggestions. Councilmember Murphy.
Quick question. What time would the reorg meeting be on the 4th?
1:00. Just the 1:00 in the afternoon, right? Yeah. So it would just be the 1:00 in the afternoon meeting for our reorg and no evening. So we suggested to make that happen on a Wednesday. So everybody's okay with that portion? Councilmember Murphy.
I just moved that we passed a resolution setting the 2017 city council meeting calendar.
I'll second it. If we were gone for six weeks, we might not come back.
[laughing]
That's a long break.
Yeah.[142.56][142.56][laughing]
Just a request that if this one page could be printed in color. Right now, the grays and the...
So there is an insert in your packet that's in color?
Oh, there is. Okay, I didn't see it. I apologize.
No, that's okay. And that's a very good point, because anybody reading this online sees it's dark shaded and is not clear. But just know that there is a color one online for everybody to see what the differences are. And it's all posted on our website as well. Will be, after we approve it, will be posted on the website. Was that a second, Dan?
I second.
Oh, you seconded, Gene. Okay. So we have a motion in front of us to update the 2017 calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with one excused. Okay, the next item in front of us is a resolution by the City of Bellingham making a declaration for substantial need for the purpose of setting the limit factor for the 2017 property tax levy. And I'm going to turn that over to our Finance Director, Brian Henshaw.
Thank you, Brian Henshaw, Finance Department. The next two items are related. As you recall, last year, we did a resolution similar to this. So statutorily, the tax levy is limited to 1% increase or the inflation rate as measured by the implicit price deflator. This year, the implicit price deflator is 0.953%, so just under the 1%. And I included in your packet on page 87, an article and graph from the Municipal Research and Service Center. They did a good job of explaining how this is measured and also that we've... This is the second year in a row that the implicit price deflator is below 1%. You can see the last five years have been historically very low inflation rate, just below either 1.6% or all the way down to 0.251%. So we are in a time period that is significantly below the normal. The Fed rate is trying to get the inflation rate up to 2%, but so far, we've been under that for the last several years. If you choose to levy the property tax and wish to levy the full 1%, we do need to pass this resolution. It only adds $9,000 or $10,000 to the total amount, but it is baked... The budget is based on the full 1% that has been proposed so far. Any questions about that first, and then I can go on to the next resolution, and then we can come back to them one at a time.
Councilmember Lilicust.
Just a small question. There are several different kinds of indices for inflation, like as you said, Consumer Inflation Index. And I thought there was one that was kind of peculiar, tailored to the sorts of things that city governments buy, right? Is there an index like that? And what is that index? And is this it, or is there a different one? Because I'm trying to figure out, for our own expenditure planning, what is the inflation rate we're expecting to see on the things that we buy?
Well, you're right. There are several different measures of inflation. The legislators picked this one, so we have to do this one for the tax levy, if you so choose. But the more common one is the Consumer Price Index, CPI. And then they have different measurements within the CPI for that. And then you have the East Coast, West Coast, National, and even smaller regions than that. So I think the IPD is more for consumer versus just the big aggregate for business, which would be more like the CPI and regional one. So the CPI is run a little bit higher than that. It's been about between 1% and 2%, depending on which month you're looking at. So they all vary, and they all have different components, is about the best explanation I can give you. And then there's pros and cons with each one. So depending on what you're trying to show...
Right. Which one is most likely to reflect the prices that the city will see for the sorts of things the city buys?
Well, we usually reference the CPI for the West Coast. And that runs a little bit higher than the National one. So that's up closer to 2%, even though National CPI is about 1.6. So we choose to use the West Coast, and it runs higher on the average.
Okay. We use that for budgetary purposes?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And contracts.
Yeah.
Councilmember Murphy.
I just moved that we passed a resolution setting the limit factor for the 2017 property tax levy.
Second.
Any questions? Councilmember Barker.
What's the process of this? So we approve that we feel like we should go that direction? Is there a public process beyond this, or we just make that decision and...
No. You are passing the resolution for substantial need is what is needed for that. And then you would also vote for the ordinance which follows for the property tax.
Okay. We have a motion in front of us to approve the resolution for the declaration of substantial need for the purpose of setting the limit factor for the 20... I'm on the wrong page. For the 2017 property tax levy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with one excused.
All right. So the next ordinance on page 89 in your packet has to do with the actual property tax levy rates, then. So on October 24th, we had a public hearing on the budgeted revenue forecast for 2017. I received the one comment that evening from Chris, and also, I think you all received his written comments after that. His comments and questions were concerning how levy rates were established for both the Greenways levy and for the home levy. And I think we answered those questions, that they're by committee, and then they go to council, and then they're put on the ballot, and then they're voted on by the public. So if there's any other comments about that or questions concerning the levy rates, but otherwise, I would suggest that you now close the public hearing for written comments for the revenue forecast, and then we'll move on to the ordinance.
So this is official closure of the written... Or the public comment period towards the 2017 property tax ordinance. Councilmember Lilicust.
Move a pool of the ordinance.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Lilicust.
I just want to make a comment. On page 92 of the packet, you have a nice summary table, Ryan, which you or maybe somebody else prepared. At the bottom, it has impact and median home. For years, we did impact on your average home of $250,000, which really wasn't a fair measure anymore. And the one thing is that the housing value was kept artificially flat, but that isn't actually how it goes. So I really appreciate now using the city median, although I'm surprised at how high the city median house is. Does that number change from year to year in this table? Like, go slightly up and down?
Yeah. So that is the median number from just in October with the Bellingham Herald article. And it did go up substantially from the 250 that was tracked there before. It's important just to use a constant, at least for the two years, so that you can see that it's not changing by the assessed valuation, and it's the levy rates that are being, you know, that are showing the impact there. So you'll see that the 2016 total, this is the city's levy rates only, is $973 for a $370,000 assessed value home in Bellingham. And the reason it goes down in 2017 is until tomorrow's election results, we don't know about Greenways or any of the other ballot measures, and so that is not included in the 2017 forecast at this point.
So I guess the comment I want to make is, as I've noticed over the last several years, the levy rate, as experienced by your median homeowner, actually has been pretty flat. I think there's an impression the taxes are going up, up, up. In terms of our property tax levy rate for the city, that component has actually been flat, which has not been easy to do. I think our revenues go up due to assessments, but the individual homeowner's impact isn't going up greatly due to that component.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. So we have a motion in front of us to approve the 2017 property tax ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0, one excused.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to the Committee of the Whole Work Session on the Draft 2016 Bellingham Comprehensive Plan. Staff is bringing forth the ordinance to ask city council to adopt the 2016 Bellingham Comprehensive Plan. The draft plan, public comments, and comment trackers are located at cob.org/compplan. And the deadline for written public comment was October 20th, 2016. And we have a nice full packet that is full of everybody's comments. So thank you very much for providing all that for us. And I'm going to turn this over to Rick Seppler.
Good afternoon, members of the council. As noted in your packet, you will find the adopting ordinance prepared under your direction, as well as the additions, revisions, and changes to the September 28th draft ordinance, which was subject to the public hearing. Today, we'd be looking for you to do three things specifically. The first is, subsequent to the issuance of the revisions at our last meeting, we have a request to add a line. That's on page 94 of your packets in our memorandum. This is a clarification that was requested by our legal department that states an ongoing policy we know to be true, but we wanted to state it explicitly in the comprehensive plan. It would say, "In the event there is an inconsistency between a subarea plan and the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan, the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan shall prevail." And that's actually the structure we have, but it is not clearly stated. So we wanted to make sure that was in there. And we'd look for you to act on that addition, to direct it to be included. We'd ask that if you have any other issues with the comprehensive plan, based on the record you review, to bring those forward so they can be discussed. We'd also ask that before you do a motion to move this comprehensive plan forward, you would acknowledge, as a group, that you've reviewed the full record, both written and oral testimony, and considered all the points that were brought forward for your consideration.
Thank you, Rick. Councilmember Murphy, then Lilicust.
I'd just like to make a motion to add the clarification from page 94 stating, "In the event there is an inconsistency between a subarea plan and the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan, the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan shall prevail."
Second.
We have a motion, and any discussion questions on that? Okay, all right. So all those in favor for adding the line about inconsistency between subarea plan and Bellingham Comprehensive Plan, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0, one excused. Councilmember Lilicust, okay. Councilmember Knutson?
Greg, could you put the language that Michael put on the board for H18 on the screen so we can see it?
Yes. So it's the top line there, Policy H18.
Can't really see it very well, but could you just read it real quick, Greg? I just want to make a statement after... There you go. Look at that.
Is that better for your old eyes, Gene?
Yeah.[905.12][905.12][laughing]
Okay.
Okay. I had talked to Greg before, and I talked to a few of the council members. This has been a very contentious paragraph, to say the least. And I took a look at it a second time. First of all, let me just say that I have never voted against a comprehensive plan since I've been here. I don't intend to. I cannot look our staff in the face after all the wonderful work they've done on this, the Planning Commission, and everybody else. And it's always been a pet peeve of mine not to help build something and then vote against it. I don't do it on budgets. I don't do it on this. I did want to take one last crack at it, but I talked to Greg before, and it really doesn't work, because my thought was just say continue, or not continue, but...
Evaluate.
Evaluate those recommendations down below and just eliminate Cities Community Solutions Work Group. But Greg told me that doesn't work, because it doesn't say where it came from, and I fully understand that. But I think what the public needs to realize is, there are seven of us up here, and when you hear the word evaluate, that does not mean implement. It does not mean vote for. It means we're going to take a look at it. We have the final say up here, and that is my pledge to all of you out there who have been concerned about this language. And boy, we have heard it, and we've been through it. But this is a time for healing now. Let us all start on the same page next year. And I appreciate Michael coming up with evaluating. And we don't even need to go into the other part of it, and I really don't want to vote against, so I'm going to go ahead and go forward with this. Get this done so we can... There's so much good work in here, besides the contention on this one paragraph. So, folks, just stay tuned. We're going to be talking about this in the future, and please put your faith in us that we will eventually do the right thing. And I know Terry's not here to speak his mind. I'm sure he will before third and final. But I just want everybody to know, I just cannot, in all good conscience, vote against the whole plan, because there's one little section that I don't agree with. And I don't agree with it, but we need to move on, so that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Lilicust.
First, I'm going to say, Gene, I really appreciate your attitude and approach to this. It is a little bit problematic, but I think you're exactly right. To evaluate does not mean to decide ahead of time. If somebody's come forward, we may well reject them, or they may never even make it all the way forward. Some of them may. I think part of the saving grace for me is the other policy, H8, which is something that the community's been asking for a while, or some members. That has to do with really measuring and evaluating what the current impact and the current extent of accessory dwelling units is. Until we have that foundational knowledge, I don't think we can keep going forward on the conversation. I think that will shape and determine everything with regard to ADUs. And that's step number one, and H8 is...
Actually, I think it's...
Is it eight or nine? What is it?
Nine.
It's nine.
Excuse me. H9. There you go. Evaluate and inventory ADUs in the city. That's step number one. And we, you know, so it kind of works with H18. First step number one, let's evaluate and inventory what's going on, and then we can consider if anything needs to be changed or improved. Personally, I've seen very beneficial impacts of ADUs that should continue and expand, and some terrible impacts of ADUs that we should prevent and unwind. Anyway, thank you.
Mayor Kelly.
First of all, I want to thank you, Gene, for looking at what the staff's work has been and the public's work, and appreciating how difficult it is to try to agree with everything in the comprehensive plan. Secondly, actually continuing to evaluate meets the intent I had for this. I've heard that there's some concerns about my making you do something, and if I could make you do something, there's other things I would make you do. It wouldn't be this. So as always, you also expressed, Gene, that it really is in control of the council, what they adopt. And so the continuing to evaluate is perfectly fine with me. And anyway, and I just want to, I really do want to thank you and the rest of you who have already had an opportunity to show the staff that you appreciate what they've done.
Councilmember Murphy.
Well, I just, my hope is that we can move away from the contentiousness, because we have a lot of work to do in this community, because I don't even want to limit our exploration to what's from the Community Solutions Work Group. Times are going to move forward. Things might change. I want to take those ideas and any ideas that we can get to improve affordable housing in our community, but also just to look at ways we can get all kinds of diverse housing. We have to meet so many different income levels, needs, in getting housing in this community, and I look forward to working with the community on that issue.
Councilmember Hammond.
I guess I'm curious as to how H9 would, where it goes in temporal order as relates to H18. So you indicated that that's the first step, but how is that codified into being the first step?
Well, and I believe, and I've heard this very clearly from the public, and I've heard the council agree, that you can't make decisions unless you have information. And that was a piece of information that the council wanted. So I guess I'm assuming, Rick, and you can say if I'm making an ass of myself, I'm assuming that this is, that the first step is making sure we have all the information that we need. And I'll let Rick respond.
As I understand it, a number of neighborhoods, including Seehome, have done some windshield surveys to indicate what they believe to be illegal units. Our first step is to sort of track down and see if they actually are or not. That's really the way you get your arms around the issue. When it comes to our attention that there are a number of units that are asserted to be illegal, we check each one's provenance. And we'll be starting in the first of the year upon receipt of those from Seehome, and I believe from York, too, to go through line by line, each one of those, and say, are these indeed illegal, or were they established legally under some prior law, predating the law, or conditional use permit? That'll give us an inventory, really, of what the number of units we find and the most heavily impacted neighborhoods are.
Councilmember Hammond.
So the planning and community development has the capacity to perform that inventory function alongside? I guess I'm thinking in terms of rental registration and the amount of work that's there.
It's part of it. We'll be looking at the rental registration. We'll be looking at the divergence between allowable zoning and rental units that are registered, and we'll be following up in each one. It's a very complex process, as you could see, because each one, as we've mentioned before, is like a snowflake, a unique characteristic, and we have to track its provenance when it was established. We also have to track if it is even used as an illegal unit, and not just a workshop or other space. And each one will take time. However, we're committed to following up on that. Neighborhoods have asked and deserve to have an accounting of these units, and this issue is longstanding, and we need to resolve it. In our town gown program, which will be coming before you shortly, a little bit delayed as a new person came on for the Community Coalition, we'll give you a more succinct timeline of what we anticipate doing that. But our staffing resource comes on board January 1st to facilitate it.
So that new staff resource, that's the person that would then perform enforcement? Compliance?
It's doing the research. We have enforcement capacity with our existing police department. It's someone who has the ability to do the research, saying, "This complaint's come in regarding this unit. Let's go back and see if we've ever issued a permit for it. Let's find out when it was established to see if it might have been permitted by the existing code. Let's contact the property owner and see what use is asserted to be from the unit itself, and then come to the conclusion whether it's illegal or not." I mean, to be fair, we can't just walk down the street and say, "That appears to be illegal, so we'll bust it." We need to go and do that dutiful review, because we need to have the basis of information to do enforcement. We can't just do it on the appearance of illegality.
I have a question as relates to what you referred to as the windshield survey of a neighborhood. So I believe Seehome did that, or members of the Seehome Neighbor Association performed that, and came up with, I recall the numbers, 28 ADUs. So what happens if the number exceeds the 20 that we've talked about, or the 200 for the total for the city? Can you retroactively go back and... How do you do that part of it?
Well, I think we come back and we find out, are these illegal units, or are they legally established? And if they're illegal units, we'll move to, if the laws allow them, bring them into compliance. In some cases, it could be they are illegal units solely because they didn't do a building permit. In other cases, they could never lawfully be established, and they need to be extinguished, and we'll do a workout plan on each one. Our goal is to get it offline. But we've not countenanced any amnesty. We've not countenanced any approach that would grandfather these units in. At this point, they need to comply with their existing rules. Now, should the rules change at some point in the future, units might be reestablished, but that's yet to be considered by this body through the Planning Commission, held public hearings, all those things. And we have no proposal coming through that would grandfather a unit that was illegally established.
Councilmember Barker.
So I, too, want to thank staff and Planning Commission for all the work put into the document. And I think you mentioned it before, but it is much thinner, and I think it'll be less daunting to a new council member coming on board. There was a lot of really great stuff that went into this comp plan. And I think for those that are just kind of coming into this, because you heard there was some dispute on H18, I really hope you'll take the time to go back and look at the comment tracker. Just, that's all I ask of the community, really go back and read the comment tracker, especially from your council members, and then make a decision if you feel that, you know, somebody's doing it for wrong intention. So do your homework that way, and certainly, we're all available. I know I meet with many constituents to explain my reasoning on things. The Parks Pro Plan is a huge example of moving us towards equity, and I really appreciate Councilmember Lilicust for helping with that, and really making sure that we're matching our legacy, allocating resources equitably. We used to kind of start with the end goal in saying we want equality, and then we tried to go back and fit equity in it some way. So I'm really looking forward to what comes out of that. Super, super excited. And the work that was put into the comprehensive plan around environmental justice, and actually having a definition for equity, after we've been saying that it's certainly important to us, but we had never defined it. So there's a lot of really superb stuff, and really looking forward to actually trying to implement and use the new comp plan. So what a first year as a council member to come into. But thank you for your work. And with that, I'll try my, I'll try to make the motion, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but with acknowledgement that the council has looked over the entire comprehensive plan document, we, I guess, move to, move to accept the draft document? Is that the easiest way?
[inaudible] Oh. Recommend it. Yeah. Pass the ordinance.
You move to adopt the ordinance, which would implement and adopt the comprehensive plan. And in your motion, you noticed that you've reviewed all the materials, but you also considered all of the public comments, both oral and written before this body.
Okay. So I'll rephrase that to move to adopt the ordinance, and the acknowledgement that we have reviewed the document and all of the public comment that came with it.
Second. Discussion?
Just a quick question. Rick, you mentioned it before. I'm trying to remember now. Annexations. Is that discussion going to happen next year?
The very first work product that succeeds the comprehensive plan, that's tied very closely to our level of service discussions and the perception of service in the community, is looking at the annexation phasing plan, to look at those areas, to consider the costs associated with extending services, and to balance that with existing deficiencies in the city, so that we have a roadmap going forward of where our dollars would go to best achieve the community's ends.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have a comment. A couple thank yous, obviously, to Councilmember Knutson, who's always does the best thing for the city, and it's very admirable. Thank you. To the staff, this was really, really great. The work that you did, the hours that were put in, the way you investigated everything that came, and showed all kinds of possible scenarios. I just want to commend you for the excellent work. Rick, your team did a great job, so thank you. I know it hasn't been easy all the way through this process, but I want to say that I think we've done some really great work in this comp plan. I believe, I agree with you, April. Rick, your team did a great job, so thank you. I know it hasn't been easy all the way through this process, but I want to say that I think we've done some really great work in this comp plan. I believe, I, I agree with you, April, I think it's more inclusive, I think we have equity all the way throughout the plan, and I'm very proud of the work that we did here. Realize there were some contention around some issues, but that is, nothing is ever going to be perfect, and we have to continue moving forward. I know we heard very loudly from the community that we do need assessment and enforcement on ADUs before we move forward, and we are going to try and do that. So, and H18 is just about evaluation, thank you for saying that, Gene, is, we're not passing any rules, we're just opening up a conversation and exploration. So I want to thank everyone for all the work they did, I know it took lots of hours to read everything through the comprehensive plan, and so thank you very much to all the council members for all your effort, and to the planning staff. So with that, the motion has been made in the second inch to approve the, the draft 2016 comprehensive plan, and with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero with one excused. All right, yes.
Before we move on, may I just have a moment of personal privilege?
Please.
Just a couple of folks to thank, Greg and his division, Lisa Poole, Moshe Quinn, Crispy He, and Kate Newell, our colleagues in Public Works and Parks, who supplied specific technical results in that. And just one comment on that, thanks council for your action today. The comprehensive plan is more than words, and the Planning and Community Development Department, along with my colleagues in Public Works, Parks, and other departments, fire, police, are committed fully to implementing this plan. When we said we plan to follow up and do the work that's listed there, we are going to follow through on that, because that is the roadmap for us to continue Bellingham's successes as a community, and to strive for future successes. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank your team, great work. Okay, comprehensive plan, check. So we are going to move on to the approval of minutes, and this is for, and, oh, actually, I believe Councilmember Lillquist, you have some notations around our committee meetings for October 24th.
Yes, for October 24th, committee of the whole meeting minutes, I'd like to suggest two clarifications and one correction. The correction, if I can find it. Bear with me, please. On the updated version, top of page three, it talks about a motion made asking staff to bring forward the issue of minimum densities in the next year, and it says that Councilmember Borneman made that motion. I believe I made that motion.
You did?
I believe I did. I brought up a topic.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and then I would, I'd like to make two clarifications. On the front page of that, item number three, has, did the council voted to approve the plan? It's unclear what plan that is, that I think was the Park Plan for the waterfront, not the waterfront plan. If we could just add the adjective park, say Park Plan, I think that'd be clear in the future. And then later on, there's a motion I made, Gene seconded, to recommend changes in the CFC. Could we just spill out capital facilities chapter? It, it says that elsewhere. Again, in the future, no one will, facilities plan, or chapter, I guess, because otherwise no one will know what the heck CFC was in the future. So with those two clarifications and one correction, I would, if you don't mind, move approval of the, all the committee meeting minutes of the afternoon of October 24th.
Second.
So we have a motion in front of us to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero with one excused. Older new business.
What about, do we do the special meetings, too?
Uh, yeah.
One's on the 17th, or is that for tonight? That's for tonight, I'm sorry. I'm trying to push us to tonight already, so sorry about that.
Just knock it all out at once, right? Older new business.
So after attending Strong Towns, I think some of us attended that, they, they showed a very interesting map of, kind of, I think they used taxation and what areas support the infrastructure that's needed, especially what they've noticed over, while it's been the more dense areas are actually able to support the infrastructure maintenance that's needed. And, and in some ways, they also showed that some of the poorer communities that were most dense were actually almost, I think he used the word subsidizing, some of the single-family areas, because they were bringing in enough revenue to care for their own, as well as to help, because the single-family areas weren't actually bringing in enough revenue to even replace their streets and sidewalks. So I'd like to see a similar attempt at a map in Bellingham, just to see if that's actually the case here. So one, just by density for housing, but then also to, to dig deeper into the details and, and look at the demographic of the areas. So I, I had mentioned it to Rick, but I don't, if that's possible.
And I would say, as Rick says, we'll put it on the work plan, but it's something definitely to prioritize if that's a priority after the first of the year, because probably right now, there wouldn't be time to do something like that.
Yeah. Can I follow up on that?
Councilmember Lillquist, and then she can have her.
Well, I'd like to send it back to April, but I strongly agree with your request. I thought that was a very informative way of representing something that's very important for us to understand and know, what parts of our city are difficult to maintain infrastructure-wise, what parts actually carry their own weight in terms of taxation. We don't expect every place to exactly even out, but it's important just for us to know planning-wise, and so, you know, Kelly and I talked about this, and I guess my opinion would be, yeah, I want to make it relatively high priority, put it on the to-do list, but relatively near the top, that's my personal opinion.
Well, and the reason why I would support that is, in talking with the community, especially people who come in and are like, why, why are you trying to change things? And, and I've found that after a 15, 20-minute conversation of explaining some of these issues and budgeting, and I, I've always thought, gosh, it would be so nice to have just a easy narrative to help people start to understand. So I think it would be great even before the ADU discussion, so we could start helping people understand that a little bit more density here and there, as we go over time, and doing it incrementally, you know, what, what would those changes be? And so for myself, I think having more, especially visual aids in, in our current society, to help explain those things in such a short soundbite, would be really helpful, helpful out in the community, because it's, it's really tough to have that 15, 30-minute conversation with, and I'm having like the same exact conversation, and, and our constituency is so progressive and so great that they get there, they totally get there, but we, we need to help them get there a little bit sooner, without having to meet with every single one. So that would be my reasoning for figuring out some of those visual narratives to help of why are we, why are we really looking for infill toolkit, not to be a greenfield toolkit, I think is what somebody called it.
Well, and it, it might be helpful also, because as the council made the decision to keep the, the city boundaries, the UGA the same, I think that we, having objective information will show us if we match up with smart cities or strong cities, or we don't. And if, if we want to keep our UGA and our city boundaries where they are, what does that mean as far as infill and other things when it comes to where we're going to put the population? And we said, you know, it will be more dense, but we didn't really get into the details of how it would be more dense, or where it would be more dense, or whatever. So I certainly think it's a, it's a good educational activity for all of us.
I thought that presentation was excellent myself. I learned a great deal very quickly about how we should be making our decisions, and I think it would be beneficial to have that assessment done. I also am concerned that we keep throwing things on Rick Seppler's, this is a priority, this is a priority, and all of these things are important, so I'm wondering, Rick, if maybe you could come back at the beginning of the year and show us all the things we've added to your list, and maybe figure out together what we do want to prioritize, because we've, we've been asking a lot, which is all really great stuff, but I think we also need to be considerate of how we prioritize those things. So maybe you could bring us a list that, as a reminder, I know you've done this before, but just all the things we're, we're adding, which are really great things. But Councilmember Lillquist.
A few more comments in, in favor of this idea. This reminds me a lot of the discussion we just had on ADUs. If we don't have information, it's hard to make decisions. The, the map that you're talking about takes several different sources of information, the various tax rates, the various kinds of instructions supported, their life costs, and then creates out of it an area-by-area specific indication of, you know, what's going on. It's not a, a simple line graph, it is a map, which is, you know, simultaneous presentation of tons of data. We need that information to make a good decision. So I think it also aligns with our level of service discussion. How do we afford things is important, understand the flow of dollars through our community. So it informs that ongoing discussion as well. Again, that's another reason why I would bring it to the top. And the third thing I'd mention is, I was a strong supporter of us now beginning with our Parks Plan, and that's, again, an area-by-area map-based measurement for our levels of service. I think we need to go away from what can be shown in a, in a simple number or a simple line chart, into displaying things in a modern way, using GIS, Geographic Information Systems maps, basically, which show us where, as well as what, as well as how much. It's a fully quantitative way of measuring things, it can be as rigorous as you've got time to make it, but as, as you say, April, it shows a picture, and that picture tells a story which is easy to understand, not just for us, but for the public, for everyone. So yeah, I agree, Pinky, let's see that, that big list. I, I still, I'm wondering if I would move it to the top, which I think I might.
It was very informative, very quickly. Councilmember Murphy.
I'd just like to remind everyone to please vote. You have until tomorrow to get your ballot postmarked. If you aren't able to do that, then you can drop your ballot until 8:00 PM at any of the ballot drop boxes that are spread throughout our county. For more information on that, you can Google Watcom County Auditor, and then also their phone number is 778-5102. Please vote, please participate.
When you're, one Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hamel?
We might be going to talk about the same thing, I don't know.
Maybe. I, I have two quick items here. One is that I mentioned to the council president, but I want to mention to the entire council that I will be bringing, bringing forward a short report on the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force. We finished our Phase Two process, and I'll be working with Mark Gardner to bring that forward, the second meeting in December, and I'll be conferring with Peter Raffato and the mayor to just make sure that my, all my information is correct. Secondly, I'll be attending the Bellingham Police Department's implicit bias training this week, and I intend to provide a short report out during older new, next, very short, I'm being counseled by the Mr. Knudsen, very short report next, next week. Thanks.
Mayor Kelly.
No, I'm going to talk for half an hour. Just two things under new business. First of all, there's been, as you know, some neighborhood consternation about the Planning Commission, and who serves on it. And I want to do two things for you. One, I wanted to remind you that if you ever think I bring forward a nominee that is not appropriate, or weights the commission too much, or whatever, you don't have to approve everyone I bring forward. Now, of course, I like it when you do, but that is really your, your decision. And secondly, I would really like to maintain the opportunity to recommend who I think would be the very best person, and I don't take some of those other things into consideration. So I'm just saying that it's, it's kind of like, could we, could we have a discussion about it? Because I think our Planning Commission is doing a very good job. And, and I, and when I've asked about, you know, are there decisions that were made that people didn't agree with, or are you unhappy with the Planning Commission, there's, there's, really, except for, they recommended doing the same thing you did on U Street Road, only putting it in and funding it first before you develop, rather than figuring out to fund it, how to fund it, and then put it in, but it was the same result. And other than that, I haven't heard anybody really say that there's something going on with the Planning Commission, or there are decisions that are, you know, that are, are out there somewhere. So I guess one thing I'd like to say, and I thought Terry was going to be here, because he, he was very good and, and called me to say that he was going to bring forward an ordinance that would say how many people of certain occupations could be on the Planning Commission. And I want you to know that I, I really want to maintain my authority to make the recommendation to you about who is the best person. And if you want to use that as one of your screening tools about who you approve and who you don't, I'm perfectly fine with that, because that, that is your decision. But I hope we can have that discussion when Terry's here. So I was planning on bringing it up, and then he's gone, so I don't want anyone to think that I'm bringing it up because he's gone. So I'm happy to talk about that next time.
Councilmember Murphy.
I wanted to take your ideas a step further and say that the Planning Commission provides recommendations to the council. We also have the opportunity to not vote the way that they would like us to, and I'd say that we do that quite frequently. So it's always decision-making points at every single level, regardless of who's sitting at any of these tables.
Well, and we're all held accountable, and I think that's right. We all should be accountable. The second thing, and it's what I thought Dan might be going to mention, is we had a wonderful presentation today at the Jails Alternative Task Force, and, and when I say wonderful, it turned my mood from blue to pink, and pink is good. The Vera Institute for Criminal Justice is doing a mapping of Watcom County, and there were several things they said that was, that were very stimulating, and I, and it really generated some conversation on the group. But one of the things that they reconfirmed for me, and I've been saying this for a long time, but then I thought, maybe, maybe I'm off, you know, maybe there's something I'm missing, is that before you can decide the size of the jail, and to me that is, and how we fund it, and, you know, how, how big it's going to be, you have to know that you're meeting the, the goal, which I think we share, and I think the county council shares, too, which is reducing the amount of people that go into the jail unless it's absolutely necessary. So the jail is a continuum of enforcement that we have in our community. And I think we've been focusing, because we've had to reduce our jail population, on what are the alternatives, and it's been working out very responsibly, I think, things that we're doing, and now I think the county's actually talking about some of those things. So the timing of figuring out how to fund a jail, and how big the jail's going to be, are really intertwined by what the goal that we all have is. And when we presented the option to Jack this last time, our goal is to minimize or reduce the jail population and recidivism, which means that alternatives have to be robust. So I just wanted to bring that forward, because it's been, you know, part of the community discussion, and I think that these experts in analyzing counties and how they're using their facilities, and how they're using their programming money, was very enlightening to me, and, and made me understand that we're on the right track. And they're working with Spokane, so they're reinforcing a lot of the things that Brian Biggs talked to us about when he came and presented to us.
Was that recorded, by chance?
There was an audio recording of that, that entire meeting, all, all those meetings are recorded via audio, so you can, I, I think they're on the Watcom County website.
Well, I just talked to Vanessa, she's going to call Jill Nixon from the county council office, and see if we can put it on BTV, and if we can put a link on our website, because I think it, it's very enlightening. I mean, I wish it was, it, it was visual, too, but they had, they, they worked in the dark off a presentation on the wall, so I think not having it being, I mean, showing the presentation and match it up with a voice, it'll, it'll be good enough. But there were a lot of points they made, and they're very sensitive to, Watcom County is different than, they think we're a sweet rural, little rural county, which is, I always like it when people have a, yeah.
Been around here lately.
What can I say? But, but it makes, it made me feel like we could put our issues in perspective, because they've worked in very big cities.
That's very optimistic, that's great to hear.
That's why I wanted to be optimistic about the jail.
Add a couple of quick comments here to the mayor's observation. So Vera Institute, I had the fortune of observing them in Spokane when I was there last December, taking a look at their criminal justice. look at their criminal justice system, and they are great. They're a facilitating organization. They're a nonprofit, and they work specifically on criminal justice matters, so they have a deep knowledge of the subject matter. And I think that we're poised, and we're in a good position now as a county, and as a city, with having this new facilitating entity being involved with that task force. So I'm looking forward to providing more presentations as we move forward.
I have one thing. I just wanted to do a little update on the Bellingham Energy Prize, which is under the umbrella of the Georgetown University Energy Prize. We have two months left, so I'm going to be asking everyone to come in and give us presentations and updates on exactly where we are on the prize and how we're doing. And then also, I've been asked to present next week at the National League of Cities on the City Solutions Session for how the city of Bellingham has done very collaborative work with our community, with our utilities, and with our cities. So that's, I'll be in Pittsburgh next week. I'll be here Monday, but then leaving for that conference. So, so that's, so we'll be having updates on that shortly, and hopefully, we're going to, you know, kick this ball out of the park, but we got two months left, and I'm very optimistic. So, anything else? Did I miss anyone here? Any other comments? Okay. So we are going to move into the mayor's boardroom for the Work Session 2017-18 Biannual Budget, and we'll just take five minutes, and we'll reconvene in there. Is there something else?
Well...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Marie. And after our meeting on the budget session, we will have an executive session. Executive sessions are closed to the public. There's a report out in the regular meeting tonight. There are three executive sessions: potential property acquisition, potential litigation, and potential property acquisition. Executive session is expected to apply, to last approximately 30 minutes, and I will be adjourning in the mayor's boardroom, not be coming back in here, so just, there will be a public statement that we are adjourned. Okay, right now, we will reconvene to the mayor's boardroom. Thank you.